Call the meetings are ordered tonight. We're going to begin with a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, and for the vision of justice for all.
All right, before roll call, I'd like to make a note on the mask. And we are meeting the state requirement for wearing masks indoors. But while we are speaking, you're allowed to remove your mask. And that is in compliance with the state policy. And now we'll move on to roll call.
So Commissioner Garek Koronowski.
Here.
Commissioner Munn.
Present.
Commissioner Port is excused. Commissioner Prenovo.
Here.
Commissioner McLean.
Here.
Vice Chair Robertson.
Here.
And Chairman Salvage.
Here.
Minutes. These are last month's minutes, July 21, 2021. Has everyone had a chance to review those? And are there any additions or corrections to last month's meeting minutes? Okay, I'm seeing no. Those meetings are approved as submitted. Citizen comments. Kelly, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on items that are not related to the agenda tonight?
We have two members that are logged in, associated with agenda items only.
Okay, thank you. Then we will move on to the first public hearing. It is public hearing A-21-03. And before we start, I will turn it over to our attorney to go over the format and rules for tonight's meeting.
Give me one second. I apologize.
No, no worries.
Hold up. Should have a memorized, but I don't.
Classic. While he's working on that, the proposed annexation, or the planning files, the proposed annexation of two properties located in the northwest corner of South Saniam Highway and Crowfoot Road.
Thank you, and I apologize. Tonight's hearing will be following quasi-digital hearing procedures set forth in 197.763. The procedures are distributed and still on the wall somewhere, I think, correct? Anyways, I don't have to get them back up on the wall if we took them down for all of our screens. At the commencement of the hearing, we will ask all commissioners to announce any ex-party contact or conflicts of interest. And after tonight, you are all going to know exactly what that is, and you won't ever have any questions about what is or isn't an ex-party contact or conflict of interest. We will then start with the staff report, which will be presented. It should include information which staff believes to be relevant to the identified criteria from the city's comprehensive plan or land use regulations, which staff believes to be relevant to the issues of the hearing. We'll then allow questions of staff by the counselors. We'll then open it up to public testimony. Audience may provide oral or written testimony concerning issues relevant to the hearing. All testimony or evidence must be directed towards the criteria described in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations. Importantly, failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval, if any, accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford, this commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues, may preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. We'll then have testimony of witnesses. We'll start with the proponents of the application, and that will normally begin with the applicant. We'll then have opponents of the application and rebuttal if necessary. Commission will then close the public hearing, and deliberation will be by the commission only. No new evidence will be allowed. Generally, a decision will be made this evening. The decision will be to either approve or deny the application. If the, if it has been proven by the applicant, the commission may approve an application with conditions for approval, which are supported by facts in the case, or the land use plan or regulations. There aren't any questions. Mr. Chairman, you may ask the council, or commission, whether there's been any ex-party contacts or conflicts of interest that they need to disclose.
Thank you. All right. Has there been any ex parte contact or conflict of interest?
I probably should make the disclosure that one of the applicants in the same disclosure would apply to both hearings. At one point was contracted to my company. That is no longer the case, and would have no impact on my decision.
Thank you, Don. Anybody else? Nope. Okay, then we'll move forward and open the public hearing and begin with the staff report.
Sir? Everything works the way it's supposed to? Okay. So, good evening. Before you tonight is a proposed annexation of two parcels located generally at the corner of Crowfoot Road and South Saniam Highway. The properties are eligible for annexation as they are contiguous to the city annexation, the city limits from this.
So, good evening. Before you tonight is a proposed annexation of two parcels located generally at the corner of Crowfoot Road and South Saniam Highway. The property.
Can I have you mute really quick? Thank you. So, the site is contiguous from this portion across the highway, which is eligible per our comprehensive plan to be annexed. The current comprehensive plan designation is residential mixed density. The applicant is accepting the current zoning, the current designation, and upon annexation would accept the residential mixed density zone. Surrounding properties are within the county, for the most parts, and have a mixture of industrial and commercial designations, as well as residential. And most of the properties are residential use with small mixes of different commercial uses as well. In terms of public utilities and facilities, there's water available in Cascade Drive, and sewer and storm drainage is already available in South Saniam Highway. And since the property would be accepting the current first designation as identified in the comprehensive plan, there's no requirement to update the city facility plans. And so, with that, I can conclude my report. And we have in the staff report, the recommended findings for the annexation. And I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? I have a question for probably Ron. Seems like in the transportation plan, there was going to be a realignment of Crowfoot Road at some point to line up with Wyerick Drive. Is that still the case?
Maybe.
It needs to be.
Nothing's happening.
It's dead. So you're just gonna have to listen to me. So, yes, that is the case. I think as one of the conditions, if they came in to do something with that, or to talk to them about it, we would request an easement for that portion that would realign. So Wyerick Drive would want to.
So if the, if the property is developed in the future, that would, that would be when the realignment takes up, or at least when the, sorry, when the easement is granted, if it's, if it's proposed for development. And then the easement is just there until the city decides to.
Right now, we're considering as an annexation.
Yeah.
So, any kind of change that would happen to the property, whether it be a building or whatever, we would require that easement to be put in place.
Right.
We wouldn't necessarily require it as right away, because we don't want to take care of it at this point.
Right. Okay. Perfect. That's what I thought. Great. Any other questions for staff? All right. Then if the applicant is able to speak, now's their chance.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So my name is Laura LaRocque. I'm with UDL Engineering and Land Surveying, the representative for this applicant. I really don't have too much to add to Kelly's presentation. She did a great overview. There's not a development plan that's proposed with this application, so it's just a straightforward annexation. But I am available to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Laura. Are there any questions for Laura? I'm not seeing any questions. Then we'll move on from the applicant. And is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight in favor of the application?
It was just the applicant that signed in to participate, and there's no members in the audience.
Okay, so there's no, no one who would like to speak in favor or against this application? Okay, then we'll close the public testimony portion and limit all further discussion between the planning commissioners and staff. All right, planning commissioners, do you feel this annexation meets the criteria set forth in the Development Code? Do you guys have any issues with it or concerns?
Beats the criteria.
Meets the criteria. Yep. Okay. I would, is there anyone who'd like to make a motion? Anyone?
I'll move to make a motion.
All right.
Yeah. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the annexation A-2103 to the city council, based on the written findings in the staff report and direct staff to draft an order of recommendation incorporating these findings and conditions of approval.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, that motion carries unanimously. Moving on. Okay, the second public hearing, second public hearing tonight is planning file CPMA-21-01. Do we need to go over the format before we open this?
I will do an abbreviated.
Okay.
Format, yes.
I'm ready.
All right. So everybody was up, everybody was on the, in the audience and on the phone when we read the procedures. We'll follow the same procedures, the most important for testimony. Is that I reiterate that the audience may provide oral or written testimony concerning issues relevant to the hearing, that the testimony and evidence must be, thanks, testimony and evidence must be directed towards the criteria described in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulation. You should note that failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues or other issues related to the proposed condition of approval, if any, accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford, the commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues, precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. With that, you may open it up and ask for conflicts of interest or bias.
Okay, thank you. This public hearing is a comprehensive plan map amendment, 333 Crowfoot Road. Are there, is there any ex parte contact or conflict of interest amongst the commissioners?
Okay, I see no one. There's no interest. So we will open the file with the staff report.
Sir? I'm so situated again. Takes a minute when you're used to being online to being in person again. Okay, here we go. So, before you tonight is a proposed comprehensive plan map amendments for the property at 333 Crowfoot Road. It is a property that's approximately just south of 15,000 square feet, that's located on Crowfoot Road between Cascade Drive and Central Avenue. The property is currently not annexed in the city, so it is in the county, but is within the city's urban growth boundary. And it has a current designation of commercial, which would translate to the highway commercial designation if it was ever zoned, annexed and zoned into the city. The applicant is proposing to change the comprehensive plan designation to mixed use, which would still allow for commercial activities to occur. And so in the future, if it were to be consolidated with other properties, to do a larger commercial development, that would still be possible with the mixed use designation. Or it would also allow for a residential use to occur on the property. But as it is a small 15,000 square foot property with a lot of frontage, there's not a lot of residential development that could occur on the property. But they could use the existing structure and convert it for residential purposes, which would be allowed under the mixed use zone. However, the project or the application does not include any development proposal. The applicant has not indicated any development proposals part of it. And they have also indicated that they do not intend to annex into the city at this point in time. For surrounding properties, to the west and to the east on either side are within the county, and they're zoned for residential densities, and they include resident, single-family homes. To the south is also within the county, and it has a mixed commercial, mix of commercial and residential uses. And to the north is partially within the city and partially within the county, that maintains a public use or residential designation. And that includes the Seven Oaks Middle School and the Crowfoot Baptist Church. So in order to do a comprehensive plan map amendment, you must ensure that the proposal does not create an impact to the existing city facility master plans. And if it does, then you need to update those facility master plans to address the proposed change. We've taken a look at those plans and proposed change. Because of the scope of the property, which is less than 15,000 square feet, and the lack of proposed annexation or change in property at this point in time, we've determined that there is no needed change to the facility master plans. There is a planned sewer improvement in the area through the West Side Interceptor project. And so there would eventually be sewer available to service the property. And with the mixed use designation, the, there would not be a change, or there would be a negligible, negligible change in impact of the, to the sewer system. Same with the water and storm drainage. There is a water system on Cascade Drive, which you can see on the screen to the north in the blue line. That could be extended to the property eventually. And the mixed use designation, again, would be in general conformance with what the plan accommodates for, for usage. And in terms of the transportation system, Crowfoot Road is considered a minor arterial, which is meant for higher flows of traffic. And Cascade and Central Drive and Avenue are also designated as collectors, which are intended for a medium level of traffic. And so a change in designation of this property from commercial to mixed use, where you could still do commercial, and where you could do residential, and light industrial, which is not truly a feasible site for light industrial, but does allow for it. All of those uses would still be able to be accommodated with the existing transportation facility plans. And so with that, based off of the proposed staff report and the findings in the staff report, the facility master plans would not need to be updated. And so it would be at the discretion of the planning commission to review and determine whether or not the designation change is appropriate. So I conclude my report. Answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes. What is the estimated time for the completion of the West Side Interceptor?
We are looking at, so this next phase would probably take us two, I want to say two and a half years, but it only goes to Crowfoot and Hillview. That's the extent of it. So the extension, that's where we're ending with this phase, just due to the funding. The original plan, or the ultimate plan, is to take it to the intersection of Wyerick and Highway 20, which would hopefully eliminate the pump station there. Now, when that happens, I think we've kind of said that it's going to be development driven at that point.
So we're looking at two and a half plus years to affect this property?
I would take a stab that you're looking at probably 15 to 20 years before you would have sewer there. Unless somebody, some big development continues on with the West Side Interceptor. But from the city's perspective, it's serviceable, but it's not, it's not anything that we're taking on at this point. But you can service it.
Kelly, what is the, so it's currently in Lynn County. What is its designation in the, under the county?
I don't know the actual county zoning designation, but it is consistent with our comprehensive plan as it sits today.
As commercial?
As commercial. And so in order for any non-commercial use to occur on the property, it would need to go through a comprehensive plan map amendment here, which would, through the mixed use zone, allow for changes of uses. And then they would have to go through the county and through the county apply for a zoning designation change. And as long as that zoning designation change is consistent with our comprehensive plan, they would be able to move forward with it at that point.
Okay, so in order for that to be used as residential, it has to be changed on our plan first, then the county site, even though it's in the county now?
And then consistent with the county zoning designations for a residential type use.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Just a comment. I think that the property owner here is moving in the right direction as far as zoning is concerned.
Yeah, I would say that it, yeah, I'll talk about that later. All right, is the, is the applicant here tonight?
The applicant is on the Zoom and can participate.
Okay, then I would invite the applicant to speak. If they wish to.
Is on the Zoom and can participate.
Okay, then I would invite the applicant to speak.
Can you guys hear us?
A little bit of a delay.
Hello?
Hello? You guys are on audio.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, yeah, we can, we can hear you.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Hello? Turn the volume up.
All right, can you hear us now?
Yes, we can.
Sorry about that. Never played with the Zoom thing before. So we are, we're the owners of 333 Crowfoot Road, and we are currently residing here. The county said we could move in under their rules and stuff, but we've converted it to a house already. We're just attempting to get it to where we can open it up as a drop-off center of some kind, or it would be like an overnight facility for people with disabilities.
Okay.
That's in the future. That's like, probably three to five years from now.
Could I ask who's speaking?
Jeff. Jeff Moore.
Yeah, I'm Jeff.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Jeff. All right, is, is that all you have for us?
Yeah, pretty much. I still have to get a few more permits to change a few electrical connections and stuff. But other than that, you know, it's pretty, pretty much a really nice house now. We went back to the original. We just took off the exterior of it and put a new roof on it, and it totally changed the aesthetics of the building.
Yeah, I drive by that a lot, and I've noticed you guys have put a lot of work into it.
Extremely.
Yeah, we're trying.
Yeah, yeah. All right, I'm going to ask the planning commissioners if they have any questions for, for you folks before we move on.
Okay.
Sure.
Yes, this is Commissioner McLean. You said you wanted to develop some kind of a drop-off center. Could you, out of curiosity. Could you, out of curiosity, I'm just wondering what drop-off are you talking about?
All right, so I have some children with disabilities. And they live here with us. And there's a whole bunch of people in the area that are, you know, with disabilities and they have people that take care of them. And I know the frustrations you can have, you know, and sometimes you just need an hour or two. Sometimes it's, you know, I wouldn't do an overnight till I had somebody here for at least, you know, so many consecutive times till I was comfortable with them being overnight. But eventually, you know, it might turn into something to that effect. So we're trying to get the residential setting so we can get the loan to get it through all the other fascinating things that they got to have us do.
Well, thank you, Jeff. That answered my question.
I'm sorry.
That answered his question.
We're trying to get the residential setting so we can get the loan to get it through all the other fascinating things that they got to have us do.
I think we're getting some delayed feedback here. Is there any other questions?
No.
All right, thank you, Julie and Jeff. And we're gonna, we're gonna move on. And I wanted to ask Kelly, is there anyone in the, any other people that have signed up to speak in favor or in opposition of this application? No? Okay, then we will close the public testimony portion. All further discussion will be between the planning commission and staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Commissioners, you guys have any questions, comments, concerns?
I, I thought that it was going to be a primary residence, but now it seems, I'm reading into the whole type residency and/or a business type situation.
Yeah, my understanding is it'll be primary, primary residence with like a disability daycare situation, like a drop-off daycare, not an overnight. And I think they'll probably still live there is my, my understanding from the conversation. I wanted to check with Kelly, if, if that were to be the case, would that come back to the city for approval or is that something that is not needing?
It's still in the county.
Right, right, right.
This application wouldn't change that. So they would have to, if, for it to ever come back to us, they would have to annex into the city first and then we'd have to determine whether or not that use would come back to the planning commission. I think, and I am not one hundred percent certain, but we do have the ability to have like adult daycare facilities and congregate living within residential zones and mixed use zones. Thing is, it is a mixed use designation. It does allow for a mix of commercial and residential to occur on the same property. So it could, in theory, be permissible. I don't know whether or not that would be brought back before the planning commission or if it would be an administrative review at staff level.
Okay.
But they would have to get approval for the proposed use that they're doing at the county level and they would be the, the approval factor at this point unless they annex.
Okay, any other questions?
So Ron, there's been some rumors for years about this intersection being a roundabout. If it did, would that have any effect at all?
No, we've actually got a preliminary design. Our office in Lynn County, Engineering Department, have a preliminary design and this property is not impacted by that roundabout.
Okay.
Just going to ask that. All right, planning commissioners, do you feel like this meets all the criteria set forth in the development code for a comprehensive map plan adjustment?
I do. I think it makes sense.
Okay.
I think they're moving in the right direction.
Yeah, I think it meets, I think it matches up with its current use better than what's, what it's zoned as or what's in our comprehensive plan, map, map plan. Yep.
I think, I think we could accommodate these people and help them achieve their goals.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Right.
I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the comprehensive plan map amendment A dash twenty-one dash zero one to the city council, based on the written findings in the staff report and direct staff to draft an order of recommendation incorporating the findings and conditions of approval.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a second. All in favor, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, final item on our agenda tonight is a work session regarding fueling stations.
So this is going to be a bit of rehash for our, our existing ones while we catch our new planning commissioners up to date. So we have been approached by a potential development to put in a service station in a place which is currently not permitted, which brought forth a conversation about whether or not the planning commission wants to consider expanding opportunities for gas stations within our community. As it currently stands right now, gas stations are only permitted on the highway commercial zone. So as you can see on the map, that pretty much just centralizes it right on the South Saniam Highway. And it's not permitted in any other zone. We currently have eight stations within the city and four of them are currently located directly adjacent to residential neighborhoods and residential uses. And so during the meeting in, I think it was May, we put forth a policy, a couple of policy questions, which was number one, is it appropriate to expand fueling stations to other zones or other areas of the city? And number two, if yes, then are there specific citing characteristics and development standards that we want to consider? The answer to the policy question about whether to expand or not was generally a yes. And the preferred zone for expansion was the mixed use zone. For citing characteristics, the direction was, hey, come back to us after you've done some research. So, hey, I did some research. We looked at quite a few different cities and how they permit it. So we kind of wanted to bring back to you what the few, what those cities generally do and whether or not we want to stay in, in bounds of what other cities are doing and how we can address some of the concerns. So most of the cities do allow them in commercial zones, mixed use zones, and some of them do allow it in industrial zones. The city of Salem was the only one that we saw that specifically said you can only do the gas stations in highway areas. But they also have other highways that, that cross through the city in multiple locations, whereas we're really limited to the, the one. Most of them either had it as two permitting schemes. It was either outright permitted with no other requirements or there was a conditional use permit requirement. And there was a few cities, total of three that we saw, that's provided actual citing characteristics or special standards. The city of Happy Valley provided a location standards, which was one that we had spoken of during the, the May meeting, that would identify, much like we spoke about of, you can only do gas stations on larger designated streets. So minor arterials, major arterials or collector streets. And they also indicated that you can only do it on the, the intersection corner properties, basically. So that was what we had discussed previously as, as recommended, so that it provided appropriate circulation throughout a gas station property. It limited it to where commercial was more appropriate within a mixed use zone, which is on intersections and in the higher traffic use, use areas. For the other cities, the standard type of citing characteristics and development standards that were discussed and identified were actually a lot of them that we had discussed and identified in May, which was lighting concerns and standards, enhanced landscaping to provide a, a visual buffer, more fencing, as well as minimum lot sizes. So we were pretty on par with what other cities had considered. Now it's just taking that information and what do we want those standards to be and how would we like to see them applied? So before moving on to options, there's a, a direct recommendation from staff, which would be if we are going to move forward with the expansion, it would be to maintain the standard in the highway commercial zone as is. And that ensures that we don't create a legal non-conforming issue of, of creating existing lots which are compliant with the code as is, changing that code and then making them no longer consistent with the code. And then for an expansion of the zone, doing it in the mixed use zone with a limitation of it being on intersection sites of either minor arterial to minor arterial or a minor arterial to a collector, where at least one of the roads is a minor arterial. And then that way you maintain it on those higher trafficked areas that are more intended for commercial use. So that would be a direct staff recommendation for the citing characteristics to ensure that there's a, a discussion of providing buffers to different uses. There's two different ways to do it. We can either do it directly within the development code and we can establish universally for gas stations, an increased landscape buffer. What we've seen in other codes is generally increasing it from a five-foot buffer to a ten-foot buffer and also increasing landscape requirements on the actual street frontages as well. Perimeter fencing, changing it from a minimum standard of a chain link fence to an actual solid fence so that you don't have the vehicle lights protruding into neighboring properties. And that could go anywhere from a, a wood fence to chain link with privacy slats or even if necessary, you can increase it to a masonry, a masonry wall. The minimum lot size standard that we saw applied was a minimum of twelve thousand square feet. That ensures that you're able to have enough site, site area to have entrance and exit on the two different corners, streets. And then the lighting standards that, that were applied generally fell into the universal standards that most city applies. We have our current standards, which basically say that lighting should be turned away from neighboring property lines. And we have an illumination standard that says that you, you can't have a, the light protrude far onto somebody else's neighboring property. It needs to be dim at the property line, basically. The special lighting standard applied to a gas station was in your canopy lighting. The canopy had, the, the lighting has to be recessed into the canopy structure itself. So the lights don't hang down. That would then create that direct visual impairment on neighboring properties. So we could do it as a development code amendment. There's pros to that. It does set the minimum standard for any application that comes before us, regardless of its location. But it would also be regardless of its zone. And that then does impact those in the highway commercial zone. And so you would start creating the, the legal non-conforming status for those existing gas stations, which turns to be the con if you want to create that impact. So that's option number one. Option number two would be to pursue the conditional use permit route. So you would still have the location standards identified for the mixed use as on a minor arterial and collector location shall be on a corner. That would be established as itself. But then identifying the specific mitigation measures to ensure that a, an appropriate buffer is provided. Because you're opening up a wide swath of opportunities in mixed use zones, mixed use zones can have a mixture of residential and commercial and industrial. And so there could be a proposed gas station location that's right next to an industrial use on one side and a commercial use on another side. So the question then lends itself to, do you need to have that larger proposed buffer between those types of uses? Or is a service station compatible enough with the commercial industrial use that you can maintain a basic five-foot landscape buffer with a chain link fence and that's not going to create an impact? With a conditional use permit, within our code as it's written as it stands today, it specifically says that a conditional use permit needs to ensure that the negative impacts of proposed use on adjacent properties and on the public can be mitigated through the application of either our code standards or reasonable conditions. It further goes on to give examples of what are appropriate and reasonable conditions. And I list a couple of them on the screen. And they're much of what we're talking about already, which is larger setbacks or lot areas. You can limit hours of operation if it's within an area that has sensitive uses. You can control vehicle access, require enhanced landscaping and screening and fencing materials, limiting standards for lighting beyond what we currently establish in the code. And so the conditional use permit allows us to look at a specific site, look at the specifics surrounding uses and identify whether or not there's additional mitigation that should be applied beyond the standard minimum set at the code. And we could take the comments from the planning commission and the guidance from the planning commission and establish it as an internal policy as we're reviewing these applications to understand the planning commission is going to have concerns on residential uses and adjacency to residential uses. So therefore, we're going to need to apply a larger landscape setback. We're going to need to apply a, a full, you know, fence that, that's not able to be seen through a full obscuring fence. We're going to need to apply special lighting standards to ensure that we're not creating that mitigation. So it provides that, that opportunity to look at site-specific issues and, and address them. So those would be the pros. The cons would be that there is that increased scrutiny of each individual application that puts a, a larger requirement at the, the front end to make sure that we're designing it appropriately and taking those, those concerns and considerations in hand. So those are the, where we're at so far. Tonight, it would be helpful to have the planning commission identify that yes, the recommendation as set of the location standards within the mixed use zone are appropriate with being on a minor arterial or, or a collector. And then helping us identify which option you would want to move forward with. And from there, we would take those comments and, and draft an ordinance as appropriate.
Could you quickly go back to option one real quick? And just hit us real quick.
Yeah, so option one would be you're creating a universal standard for all gas stations within the city. And since we are, we already have circumstances in the highway commercial zone where they're buffering residential and with the expanded options of having it further buffer residential with use of the mixed use zone, we would be establishing a, a larger landscape standard, likely a ten-foot landscape buffer along the perimeter of a property. The full site obscuring fence along the perimeter of the property. We would establish a minimum lot size of at least twelve thousand square feet to ensure that you have appropriate site movements. And then we would establish the, the light standards universal throughout.
You kept saying that by doing that, we'd make a bunch of properties non-conforming, but wouldn't, that wouldn't necessarily force them to comply. Wouldn't it just, they'd be grandfathered in like they kind of are.
It would not make them comply to the, the code immediately. There are triggers in which a property would need to conform at a later date. They're not often. And it could be a situation where those gas stations could stay into service for twenty, thirty years and never be impacted by these changes. There could be a situation where a gas station is shuttered for a period of time. And after that period of time, if it's beyond, I think, six months, then to reestablish, you would end up having to conform with the code sort of thing, which would create intricacies, but there's always ways around it. But it's just to, to know that you are going to be impacting existing uses with a change to the development code, which is absolutely fine and acceptable. Or you can do it as a, an application which is already within our standard of use. You can just put this kind of a use within the conditional use permit form and allow us to then have the ability to directly mitigate based off of its location.
Is this something that we would invite the public for their opinion?
Yes. So this, at this point in time is to get a, an idea of where we want to go based off of your professional opinions as planning commission members. The next step would be for us to put together a draft ordinance, which would then be subject to public scrutiny. I can already tell you that when we were originally Um, I can already tell you that when we were originally looking at this as there was a site specific um, application. There are members of the public that would have serious concerns about the subject location which started this conversation. But since this conversation is universal to a code amendment. Um, we, we are looking at just the code amendment, but they would be informed of, of any code amendment that would occur um, as well and, and have an opportunity to speak a- as would any member of the public.
Kelly, could you remind us where this? Where this started?
This started with a proposal um, for a gas station at the corner of Stolt's Hill and Airport Road. It would be the southwest corner. Um.
Oh.
Where the, the grandpa's groceries is currently situated.
And is this a design right here that?
That's just an example of, of a twelve thousand square foot site would get you the ability to have your traffic uh, separated away from the intersection with the driveways on, on either side of the street. It's just a, a sample.
It's, it seems like the um, conditional use permit gives us a lot more. Um, I guess say and the kind of flexibility. I- is that right? Would you, would you agree with that?
Yes. So uh, as a, a further planning commission training uh, in a future date. The, the planning commission has uh, review authority of a bunch of different types of applications. Usually when we see a development type, it's subject to uh, an administrative review where it's kind of one of those things though, do they check the boxes? And if so, then, then there's a, a bit of a duty bound that you, you have to approve it sort of thing. Conditional use permits has a larger burden of proof by the applicant to be able to demonstrate that the nuisances created by the use are going to be appropriately mitigated. Um, so for a, an example, the, the brewery application that came before the planning commission a couple of week, uh, months ago. We had conditions placed in it of the type of fencing that needed to be separated uh, to separate the two properties from residential property and this property. And that special condition was put in place because we knew that there was going to be a parking lot directly next to a, a residential home. And so you put higher landscape standards and you put higher fencing standards to it to minimize that, that impact.
So, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna, um, so just so I could understand your question as well, cause one uh, one glove doesn't fit all, in my opinion, but so the conditional use seemed attractive, but are you saying that if we had a minimum standard, we could also add conditions to that?
So you can do both for sure. You can set a minimum standard as identified as a development code and then you can go above and beyond that and say we want to make sure that there's extra scrutiny and required as a conditional use permit rather than like an administrative review. You can do both. Um, there is the option that, and I know that it's i- it's enticing to think about it for the site specific which started this conversation. But this is a broader conversation associated with an entire zone that would be impacted. And so in an example provided earlier where a, a gas station could be located in an area that's largely commercial and industrial and doesn't have sensitive uses next to it. Is there a need to have that higher standard? And if not, then through a conditional use permit application alone. You would be able to set either the minimum standard or a higher standard. Um, whereas if you're in an area that is highly populated as residential. You can put a higher level of scrutiny on it through a conditional use permit application based off of the, a nuisance identified that needs to be mitigated. A- and you can condition it appropriately with that individual application. Um, so it's just the question, I guess, question number one to the planning commission to help guide through the conversation would be do you feel that a minimum standard needs to apply, be applied to gas stations? And if so, well then we already have our answer. If not, then do we feel that a conditional use permit is acceptable or do we need to create specific caveats within the development code to address the concerns?
So with a conditional use permit designation. We, we would be able to determine things like i- if it's going to be at an intersection, corner property, only on collector streets, low signage, uh, clearance, downward lighting, minimum twelve thousand square foot, uh, no limit on the hours or whatever. And then designate a, you know, cyclone fence with slats and masonry. Now, that being said, would we be able to say, look, you can have uh, no limit on hours on this location, on this side of town, but on this side of town, you're kind of limited.
Absolutely. So.
With the conditional mixed use, we can do that.
With a conditional use permit. You can identify based off of its location and surrounding uses. What is an appropriate mitigation to nuisances created by that, that proposal? Um, so I'll, I'll go back to a real world example that we had just a couple of months ago of the brewery where we established that, hey, you need to be compliant with the noise ordinance. That was because you had sensitive uses next door to it. Um, and we wanted to ensure that it was specially called out that, that we understand that this could potentially create additional noise and you need to fully comply with any of the noise ordinance associated with it. Um, the conditional use permit allows you to sit there and say this site A is located in a fully industrial area where everything is shut down anyway by five o'clock. Um, and, and there's no concerns about impacts to, to surrounding properties. I don't care if you open twenty-four hours a day. This site over here is next to a residential tract, but you know, is surrounded is close to a school and, and so on and so forth. And so there's sensitive users next to it. And so it would be appropriate because of those sensitive users to require um, a, a limitation of the hours of operation. Or you can set a condition that says if there is a, a number of complaints or calls, we can bring back the application and, and set forth additional conditions based off of identified nuisances. You can do that through a conditional use permit application. Or you can just set the basic standard across the way in the development code and that's fine too.
Well, it sound, sounds like to me that conditional use would be the best way to go.
Cause every location is gonna have different dynamics and different needs based off of uh, neighbors and other factors. So it does seem a little bit more flexible.
Yeah, it would give us the flexibility to, you know, actually uh, let's say the, the public came in and there was a big uproar for and against or whatever. It would give us that flexibility to listen to the public more and say, hey, look. You know, this is what, this is what we think is best. Instead of one size fits all.
Todd, do you have concerns?
Yeah, I do. I do. I, I'm just picturing myself being a neighbor and not wanting a gas station next to me, but um. I guess. I guess I want to understand what we, what we are deciding. We're not deciding that we can have uh, gas stations in a mixed use.
Not tonight.
We are deciding whether we can, what conditions they would have if we were to allow that. Or it's already allowed. That's what I'm trying to clarify.
So right now, we can say a- as a planning commission, if you had a majority vote after this conversation that we're good how the code is. It would stay as you're within the highway commercial zone only. Um, and, and that's, that's where it would stay. Um, based off of the, the last conversation in May. It was, it does make sense, or at least the, the general consensus and there was not a, a majority, there was not a, a universal decision on it, obviously, but the, the general consensus was there, there is an interest in allowing for an expansion of these uses within other parts of the city. Um, the, the general conversation was to keep it on highly tra- more highly trafficked roads. Um, which would be minor arterials and collector type streets or in intersections. And the most appropriate zone based off of that conversation was the mixed use zone. That's a, a conceptual conversation that was had. There's been no decision made on it. But that was the guidance that was provided as a general um, majority of the, the commission indicated that that's the path that was to move forward. Tonight, it's what are the bumper stops that we want to put on that?
Mm-hmm.
Which would be inclusive of these, these characteristics that we're talking about. And do you feel that with those characteristics that we're talking about, that is a sufficient mitigation to your concerns to then move forward with the, the ordinance uh, with those mitigations included?
So one other question, how many? How many instances of where this, this question's been approached as far as how, how many people have applied or asked if we could put a gas station on mixed use properties?
One.
So we're gonna change all of it for one person?
The, the question has been posed as to whether or not it's something that the, the commission feels is an appropriate action to take.
Okay, alright.
It is up to the commission if, if it is an action that the commission wants to take. We have no skin in the game. A- at a staff level, it's that is a question for you as resident representatives. Uh, if you want to pursue that action, if you think that is an appropriate action. Um, we have one currently that has an interest in it, which is the, the posing of the question. Um, we would not move forward with it at the staff level if it is not the decision of the commission to move forward with it. Um, but it's a question that has been posed and we've we've done these conversations and that's it. There's been no decision made, obviously. We're just asking for commission direction of, do you want to move forward with it? If so, under what guidance and do you have enough buffers a- and you know, bumpers put on it that it's, it's acceptable to you? Um, and once we get to that, we would get to an ordinance stage and so it's.
Well, this is kind of how I'm looking at it myself is, is you know, we're, we're here planning things ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years down the road. And you know, now that this has come up from the owner of grandpa's grocery. You know, he's put a, he's, you know, kind of put the bug in our head. And hey, you know, this is gonna be, you know, down the road, a down the road issue. And should we start addressing it now or just you do nothing about it or say nothing about it? But I, I think that, that this owner bringing this up. You know, is, is uh, kind of opening up the, the planning bug in us to look down the road ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. And decide, you know, if we want to start planning for this now or wait till, you know, we have four or five people. I, I, I don't think we're in a big hurry to, to make a decision.
You are, this is a, a strictly policy conversation that based off of the direction as a group provided to us would get us to an ordinance. Um, it is fair to say that if the, the planning commission as a, as a majority identifies that this is an appropriate action and ordinance is created, it's fair to say that the person that has brought this up would likely bring forward an application very quickly. Um, so yes, it is a, a, a bug put in the ear that would have potentially a direct impact and a direct application. Which would still be subject to a public hearing process, which would still be subject to a, a, a public scrutiny, um, for sure. So the, the question before the planning commission um, is do you feel that this is an appropriate action? Is there more information that you feel is necessary to make the decision? Do you want to take the approach of this has been requested of us, it makes sense and, and let's put something forward or take a more you know, um, conservative approach and say, hey, we are doing a comprehensive plan update here in the next uh, couple of years and should we look at it as a whole there? What we're really looking for at this point is what information do you need to make the, the decision of whether you would like to move forward with this concept or not?
We, uh, we discussed more than just mixed use as um, cause it seems like if you, uh, industrial or commercial would also, I know commercials are already allowed. But it seems like putting a gas station in an industrial zone isn't gonna hurt anybody's feelings. But are you talking tonight about just adding mixed use as a possibility?
It is at your discretion.
Okay. I just, your, your answer to Todd made it sound like we're just kind of focused on mixed use.
Based off of the meeting in May, the, the direction was mixed use seems like it's the appropriate zone in which it should go into.
Yeah.
Um, that's not the same direction. That's not the same direction and that's fine.
That's because the residences were in the, in, around that, in areas. That's why it was, that's why I thought we talked about mixed. Is that right? Cause commercially.
They probably make, I, I believe mix was probably on our radar because of the, the impact. If we are, my, my thought is if we are gonna move forward with drafting some type of um, I guess code on this, that industrial would be allowed just as easily as mixed or commercial. That's my thought. Yeah, I mean, you could put it back there by INTECH. It probably doesn't make sense to put a gas station because you don't have the traffic flow, but if someone wanted to put a gas station back there. It probably makes just as much sense to allow it on industrial land as it does commercial or mixed use. That's my two cents.
And that's kind of my concern. I mean, we're not talking about developing a brand new city where we're gonna make code and we can put, you know, we're, we're from the very beginning where say, hey, look, mixed zones, we're gonna allow gas stations on every corner or uh, minor arteries, but we're talking about an established town that has residents been here for fifty years. And now we're changing it for them. And that's the concern I've got. And so I, I just want to make sure I would feel uncomfortable making a decision, sitting in this room without the public's
Right.
opinion. Cause I, again, I don't have, this, there's no skin in my game because I'm not near any place where it's gonna have a gas station, so I'm not too worried about it, but the fact is, is I'm not the per- you know, that I feel that we have an obligation to make sure we, uh, uh, the public is heard and we've, we, what the public wants to do, not what we want to do.
Yeah.
So that's the only concern I've got.
I agree and that's, um, that's that would definitely be part of the process regardless of however we figured out, we thought it should be the public, the public can have some input and be like, no, this is ridiculous. We don't even want to see this. I personally think there's a, there's a place in towns for like a neighborhood gas station. As, as a town gets bigger, it, but that's why I don't want to have a black and white code where if it checks every single box, our hands are tied. Like, we already feel like our hands are tied a lot of these times, you know, and the public comes with legitimate concerns. We're like, well, it meets all the criteria. And I don't want to be put in that position. I want to have more flexibility. Like, it does, it might make sense in this spot in town.
Mm-hmm.
But it doesn't make sense in this
Right.
town. And that's, that's where I think the conditional use would give us the most flexibility.
And if that's, if that's where the direction going, I agree a hundred percent. We, I think we need to have some of that. I don't want to say control, but we have that decision making to make those conditions.
Yeah.
I agree.
I agree with the conditional.
And just to be clear, in every single application, even an administrative review, you have the power of a condition. And we'll, we'll go through a, a, a bigger discussion on what that's like. With a conditional use permit, you just have teeth that it's specifically written in our code that you shall think about these things and you shall mitigate them. And so when you look at a conditional use permit application brought forth to you. In the findings, you have a discussion like noise generated from this business is expected to be of this type and during these, uh, these situations. And therefore it's not going to have an impact or, and therefore we're going to put in a masonry wall to, to provide a further buffer or a higher density of landscaping to provide that, that, that thing. So in the findings, it's specifically already within a conditional use permit that you've seen before, you ha- has that discussion. Whereas that type of discussion's not necessarily required as part of an administrative review. The administrative review application process is simply, do you meet these sections of the development code? If yes, that's fine. But then you can also add conditions that say, yes, it meets this, but we want to see it in this manner and in this way. So we can condition anything. With a conditional use permit, you just have a further level of scrutiny that you need to adhere to. But it sounds like the bigger question needs to be whether or not you want to move forward with this at this time. And if so, what is the appropriate zone and then we can draft everything from there. And this is a public forum, right? We are in a planning commission meeting. Members of the public are available. Laura LaRocque is still patiently waiting to, to, to listen to this and, and if you wanted her input. You can ask for it. Um, in any development of an ordinance, we would establish a, a public hearing process, which would require multiple hearings, one before you and before the, the city council. And if you really wanted to, we can put it as a public hearing discussion for this type of thing as a future meeting as well. Um, but we do have at least the, the request for some form of direction from how we want to move forward.
Unfortunately, we normally get the most uh, public opinion later on when they don't like it.
Right, I.
When it's specifically.
By a can of worms, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So Kelly, um, if we move forward with this, would I? So, Kelly, if we move forward with this, what I think I'm understanding is the first step would actually be a request for a zone change if we're talking about an arterial or a collector.
The first step would be to amend the development code.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't make myself clear. If, if this is in place. We've already done the, the amendments.
Yes.
So, an applicant comes in, says, I want to do such and such on such and such corner that zoned residential, because that's what most of the collector and arterials, their first step would have to be a zone change.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Unless they're already mixed use or industrial.
So, this conversation is difficult and I, and I understand that because we know that there's a potential application, but we're also looking at it as a generic, general, how it's affecting an entire zone. And I, I get that and it's, it's sticky and it's uncomfortable because you're trying to counterbalance both of them. Right now, the conversation and the question is whether or not, without thinking about that site-specific location, is a mixed-use designation or industrial designation appropriate for gas stations? If so, is the conditional use permit the appropriate action? If that's the case, then an ordinance is drafted and appropriated. For the next step, if you have an arterial and a collector street, you've got a site that's open and available, but that site is currently designated residential mixed use, you have to come back to the planning commission and the city council and justify the change of your property designation to be mixed use. And at that point, also apply for a conditional use permit contingent upon that change, which is all public forum, which is all public input. Again, the caveat and the understanding and the stickiness of, we know that there's a potential application that would likely come forth before the planning commission for that zone change to then authorize the use at this location.
However, they, they wouldn't have to say, we have an intended use to make this. If they're requested to change it to mixed use from, let's say,
the last applicant.
Residential.
Right.
They wouldn't have to have a planned development on it. They, they could just be, we're requesting to change this to mixed use.
They need to have a justification for it and as long as they have that justification and you feel that the discretionary findings and the decision criteria are met, then you can choose to approve it. You have the scrutiny. A lot of the ones that have been brought forth before you guys are pretty black and white and pretty easy. There's some of them that, that are a little sticky. There's some of them that, that you have to think about. And for zone changes and comprehensive plan map amendments, those are not the black and white criteria where you feel duty-bound to approve. Those are the ones that you guys can think about and say, is this the right decision for this location?
Yeah.
Or for this site. There, there, you have that within your duty to evaluate on, on those types of applications.
However, if we approve it, if we, if we make the amendment and there's already, it's already in the appropriate zone and it meets the criteria for a gas station, then, and the conditions that are outlined in the plan, then we are bound to say yes.
For a conditional use permit, for an example, we at the planning and engineering staff could say, we feel that it is appropriate for you to have a masonry wall in between these uses because there's going to be an excessive noise or too much light intrusion. We have to have a justification and what's called a nexus and re, and rough proportionality, which our attorneys are going to love that I said those words. But you have to have a justification for why you're putting in those conditions and it has to make sense in terms of the scope of the application. We at the staff level can, can help put those together. But an applicant can come forth and say, yeah, but we don't want to do that. Well, under a conditional use permit, they can sit there and they'll, they'll talk to staff and at some point in time we'll say, well, you know, at some point in time, you have to go in front of the planning commission for a hearing. And if they don't want to do what we're suggesting, we can come have a conversation at the, at the commission level and say, we feel at the staff level that these are the appropriate mitigations because of X, Y, and Z. And there's a direct nexus to what we're conditioning to, what the, the impact is, and it's appropriate for this project.
Yeah.
And if the applicant doesn't want to do that, then the commission can either A, condition it as such and you shall follow the conditions or say, if you're not going to mitigate it appropriately, then you don't have to approve the application.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is say that you do outline, oh, you have to have a six-foot or eight-foot tall masonry wall with artillery on the top. And, you know, you outline all this, you're like, yeah, we'll do it. Well, then it comes for the planning commission and it, it's checked all the boxes now. Is there any gray? Because we, we all feel like this, this could work in certain spots.
Yeah.
But there's spots that it might not work and it's so hard to put it in writing. Like, you can't have the human element of the, I guess, what I'm looking for, gray area.
So, we're all humans and we're, we're, we're not able to see the full picture without being impacted by the full picture, which is why you have a public hearing. So, say at the staff level, we, we do our due diligence and we do our best in what we think is the appropriate thing based off of our general understanding. And then the public comes and says, well, what about this and what about that? And those were factors that push it over the edge for you guys. And, and yeah, these are appro, and I can't come up with a good example right now, so I'm sorry. So, it's going to have to be.
Well, let's go with the standard traffic. That's, I mean, that's, or, I mean, that's usually the, the, the big one. Whether it's an apartment complex or a brewery, it's going to be increased traffic.
So, traffic is going to be a, a difficult one to use an example because there's, there's standardized metrics of what's appropriate traffic versus not. There's warrants that need to be run in terms of whether it's appropriate to put a traffic signal versus a stop sign versus not. So, I have a convalescent home with windows that directly face onto this property and it's an older structure and, and they're very large windows that we don't have coverings over or something like that. And now you're going to put a canopy with lighting right next to that and, and it, it's going to create noise in the middle of the night and we have residences that are not, that don't handle that. I'm, I'm reaching its draws of what might be an acceptable one, but we could hear something where it's like that wasn't considered or conceived in the planning phase at, at staff level.
So, you could make a condition that says hours of operation could be limited and/or you could go a little bit more extreme on the fencing and light mitigation?
There, there's several paths in which you could do it at that point, which is you either make those conditions. You continue the hearing to a future date and then say, staff, you need to go back and work with the applicant to address these concerns and see what you come up with and then evaluate whether or not those are appropriate. Or you can identify that, that is too high of a level of concern where there's no mitigation that you feel is appropriate. And at that point in time, you direct us to work with our city attorneys and, and work through it and identify an appropriate path of, of there's no mitigation that could occur to, to approve this project.
And the key is, I mean, it has to be justified by the evidence in the record, right? So, you know, that's, that's your job. If there's evidence in the record that raises concerns that you, concerns you and those conditions, you know, you can place conditions, you can try to alleviate those concerns. But kind of getting to the heart of your issue is like, okay, well, we do all that, we do all that, I just don't really want it right there.
Yeah.
That's the tough one because that's where it's, may not be justified by the evidence in the record, right?
So, simply put, we just have to have a reason for our reasoning.
Well, yeah. And, yeah, yeah. And it has to be, you know, and sometimes they'll cha, challenge that and then go up to Luba and Luba will tell us whether or not that was justified or not.
Yep. And that exactly has been, is my concern. It would be extremely difficult to be consistent.
That's right.
Under that.
That's right.
And I'm afraid that we would be challenged over and over again. I'm, you know, we're, we're kind of talking about gas stations. But what if it's another application, a neighborhood grocery or somebody wants to put it, sporting goods store that doesn't have the same impact as a gas station would? We'd probably look at it entirely differently. In your research, Kelly, did, was there any impact standards in their, in their code at all?
The lighting and, and, and increased landscaping were, were the consistent standards that were applied. Increased landscaping provides a, a buffer for, a visual buffer, provides a noise buffer, provides an odor buffer from gas smells and, and going through the landscaping. And then the lighting is just to ensure that it's oriented appropriately to not impact directly visual impairment. Those are the standards that, that are universally applied. In, in the history of, of working in the field, those are the general standards that are universally applied. Sometimes you'll see you have to have a block wall. But I don't know if there's a justification for a block wall versus just a full site obscuring fence because it's not really a noise issue that I know of associated with gas stations, so. But those are the, the ones that we hit at the beginning of this conversation in May and the ones that we researched and the ones that we talked about now of the, the landscaping and the, the lighting are, are the two keys to provide that, that buffer.
Now, one thing that comes to mind is if we went with something like that, would we be able to limit what kinds of businesses? For example, you know, a gas station, a little community grocery store or, you know, porn shop or something. I mean, who would want that in their community?
I don't think you want to throw that one in the mix. Our attorneys might get a little upset.
I mean, how would you?
We're, we're.
Don't get upset. We are designated just like gas stations.
The only.
A fueling station, right?
The only code amendment that we're talking about is related to gas stations.
Okay.
And whether it's appropriate in the zone. There are other standards that you can apply so long as they, there is a justification for it. You can say that we will allow for gas stations to occur at intersections of minor arterials and collectors minimum and it cannot abut a residential zone. You, you can apply that because then you're setting the standard that you do not feel that it's an appropriate use to have directly adjacent to residential. There just needs to be a justification for that. Cities grow, to, to talk about an existing city, cities grow organically. You know, when Airport Road was built up, it was largely residential, but now it's the major, it's one of the major streets that go in and out of the city. And so, as the city grows over time, there might be a question posed to the city as a whole of, because that is a large corridor that's used, is it appropriate to transition it to a commercial use? And I'm using that as an example, that, not saying that that's going to happen, but cities change over time. It's an organic growth. Highway 20 was the major path of travel in and out of the city for a very long time. Now you have alternative routes that people are using. Do you feel that it's an appropriateness to allow and expand for service stations to be provided throughout the city to service different parts of the city? These are the types of questions that are theoretical questions to be asked. And then the next step is, do you think that it's appropriate to, to allow it in, in the type of zone? And are we providing enough coverage through, say, a conditional use permit application to, to appropriately mitigate concerns? Or do you just think that it's not necessary at all and therefore don't do it? But these are the theoretical questions that unfortunately are posed to you as a commission because at the staff level, they're not decisions that we should be making. Sorry.
I'm not opposed to having a gas station on a corner. That's not me. I just want the public to weigh in. Organically, we're changing absolutely, but organically, hopefully, hopefully the public is involved with that organic change. And I think that's what produces the change. So, for us, however many people we got here right now, to make that decision, I think is kind of, you know, put a little extra power on us that we shouldn't, we should distribute out.
But we are just make, we are just making the decision to, to move for, whether or not to move forward and then at some point that would incorporate a public, public hearing with, with their input involved.
There'd be at least two more public hearings.
Right.
Are you wanting to have additional public input beyond the traditional process?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know. I haven't gone through the training yet. All I'm saying is, I, I feel really uncomfortable right now to say, hey, look, let's put gas stations in mixed areas because it sounds like if we do that, if we say, hey, we're going to allow gas stations in mixed residential, then we do not have the power to say, hey, look, you know, on this corner, makes a lot of sense, which does make sense. But on this corner, there's no way we want one there. But the trace explanation is we don't, we have to really make a nice tight box to be able to do that. And I don't think we're going to be able to do that. That's, that's an opinion thing, most of the time, I would think. I like the idea of what you're saying, hey, now I can't remember what you said.
I've.
A conditioning, oh, gosh darn it. Anyways, I guess putting language in, in the code that says, hey, we can limit this mixed residential from having a gas station, whatever.
Separation from residential.
Separation from residential, thank you. Yes. Something like that, I, I could see. But I guess I don't know. I guess I'm not understanding exactly what we're.
Well, and that's why I asked about the zone change initially.
Yeah.
Because if somebody comes in and asks for a zone change in a residential zone to mixed use, usually there's some concept of why it's being changed. I mean, they've got to give some, some justification for that zone change. So, that's when we can make that decision. Is this appropriate or not appropriate?
I see. But if they're, okay, but if they're already in the, already in the mixed zone, because mixed residential, like the gentleman we just approved tonight, he could turn that into a gas station. Which, in my opinion, that would be a perfect place for one.
Well, and the reality is, you know, is this body has to act pursuant to criteria that have been adopted, right? And so, if, if an applicant meets the criteria, you know, the, the board and your responsibility and the advice I would give it, if it meets the criteria, you need to approve it.
Right.
I was just actually reading some stuff from the, I'm not sure, it's the Oregon Planning Commission Handbook, right? And, you know, this is the training they do. Are we going to have some more of that, the training on that kind of stuff too? Yeah. And I mean, it's kind of addressing exactly what you're asking. It says, statutes require a land use decision to be based on approval criteria. We all know that. The decision must, must apply the approval criteria to the facts. The decision-maker must apply the adopted criteria for approval that are contained in the zoning code. If the applicant demonstrates compliance with these criteria, the application must be approved, even if the decision-maker disagrees with the criteria or believes that additional unadopted criteria should be applied. Conversely, if the applicant fails to demonstrate compliance with the criteria, the decision-maker must deny the application, even if it believes that the applicable criteria are unreasonable. So, in other words, I mean, it's what we're setting up is an ability to set the criteria. And I guess one of the things that, 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 you know, kind of interested me is, I mean, we are doing an update to the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Would this necessarily be part of that discussion or?
We can.
I mean, and maybe, and I'm not making recommendations. I mean, it's the planning commission that does this and this is, that's your role in the, we're going to go over a little bit, your legislative role, right? Is whether you want to do that and, and look at establishing those criteria now and, and, you know, and, and having public comment and having public hearings. You know, and I, I guess I'm, I've been doing this a while and I get a little jaded, you know, we can, we can invite them all we want. But really, you know, the reality is, is that the planning commission is supposed to be a broad spectrum of the community to represent the values of the community, right? And so, you know, you're kind of elected to be the voice of the community, even though we certainly want them to come to, come to meetings and, and voice their opinion and all that kind of stuff. But you are the voice of, of the, of the community. So, you know, what, you know, you collectively need to decide as a legislative matter whether you want to pursue this and try to establish those criteria because with, with the knowledge that there may be instances where dang, I wish I hadn't, you know? But then even if you say dang, I didn't really want it there, but man, they meet all the criteria. You understand your responsibility or those planning commissioners in the future recognize their responsibility. So, you know, that's the reality.
That is a path that you can choose to take is because this is a conceptual conversation and because this decision does impact an entire zone, I think I indicated earlier, you, you have the decision to say, I want to see the whole board more clearly, which would be through a comprehensive plan update, which we're kicking off next year. That takes time. That, that obviously does not address the, the current property owner, which i- is also 100% fine. The decision is simply whether or not you feel either A, that you have enough information before you tonight to set us on the next step of, okay, let's look at an ordinance. Or B, do you need more information to make the decision tonight? Or C, do you just kind of want to table it, which is your decision? And, and perfectly acceptable to say, hey, let's look at this as, as a greater image for the entire city as a whole. All situations, eventually it's going to result in some level of a public input process. What that input's going to look like, who knows? And largely, there's a likelihood that we won't receive any impact until somebody actually starts applying for it right next door.
And we should also like put it in perspective what we're. talking about. We're all concerned about opening a can of worms from what the current code is. But when we've limited it to industrial or mixed use and it has to be in a corner lot of arterial slash collector or arterial or arterial, we've, we've really limited to a handful, I don't know, 20, 20 intersections in town, maybe. I, we could look at the map and probably pick out each potential spot. But it's not, the more I've thought about it, it's not as scary as it seems. With the, with the limits we're putting on it, just from a, like a broad overhead talk we've had tonight, it's already pretty limited. And we haven't even talked about the conditions we could put on it.
You could also add in to some of those conditionals, like how many residential single-family dwellings or residential dwellings are within proximity of that intersection.
Definitely.
Like, you could build a pretty robust set of criteria to go against.
Again, the added thing to, and this is getting into the weeds that we probably don't need to, but anytime that you're going to put in a condition or a mitigation, there needs to be a justification. So there would need to be the conversation of what is the justification to restrict a service station from being next to a residential use when we've got four examples, so half of our existing businesses that are of this business are right next to residential.
Right, right.
And so there's, there is absolutely perceived not wanting it in my backyard, 100%. But when you have four existing businesses that 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 are right next to them, is there truly an impact that would cause you to not approve a project when you already have that circumstance that's in there? That's where the conditions come into play, where you can then at least mitigate that concern with enhancing the landscaping, with creating larger buffers that don't currently exist in other businesses, but you could then provide on those new. So I don't want you to assume that, you know, because it's next to residential, therefore it's not acceptable, therefore we don't want to approve it. We would need to have a greater level of justification, a great, and and that's, I think, might be one of the reasons why I'm struggling to come up with an example, is why you wouldn't approve one once you provide the mechanism to do so. But you could mitigate it through your conditions and you could provide, yes, this is going in next to you, but these are all the things that we're going to make them do above and beyond a standard application to ensure that you're, that there's that buffer and that nuisance is mitigated.
Where does the 12,000 square foot minimum lot size come from?
Examples from other cities, that that was the the universal one. I think there was only two of them that used it and it was 12,000 square feet. That's, that's large enough to provide a driveway on either far ends of it to be far enough from an intersection, basically, usually.
Lori, what do you think?
I think the minimum lot size would be good. I think the conditional permit opens it up to where we can mitigate the different things. And when you said the actual con was just the number of times it might come before us. And like Jeremy said, the actual areas they could actually go across town. Right now, it's just Highway 20, right? And so then the actual number of areas that you're talking about aren't as many as you would think, plus there are already four, so.
Thanks. Don, Wisdom?
So I'm looking at it from a prospective developer, I guess. Unless we put some really clear and objective standards to it, by the time it comes to us, that developer could have put thousands and thousands of dollars into planning and engineering, yada, yada, yada. I'd hate to put him in a position of hoping we're in a good mood that night, kind of a thing. So I'm in favor of going forward, of creating something. But I feel we need to put some clear and objective standards to it, so we're not so we don't become a discretionary body to say, yeah, no, what do you think, kind of a thing? We need something that we can put our finger on. And I agree, I mean, I'm talking mostly about siting standards. As far as mitigating factors within the site, yeah, that's, that's conditional use material. And we can be discretionary there depending upon the impact. But I would hate to be a developer that's just hoping he catches us on a good night.
Well, Don, I mean, I guess I, I kind of feel like I should respond to that because I don't think it's any different than anything else we do. It's just you're applying, you're kind of instructing the, or you would be instructing staff to come back with basically part of the comprehensive plan or, you know, rules and and stuff like that. It's no different than any other decision we have to make given, you know, if if, once the rules come before you. So, you know, I I don't think that making a decision on that issue, if somebody, if it comes forward, is any, really any different than an apartment complex, any different than a than a zone change, any different than, you know, it's, it's just having those, you know, the the ability that we've, you've all talked about of, you know, the the certain restrictions, the conditions and that kind of stuff.
I absolutely agree with that. I was just making the point that, that as we go forward, if somebody has a conceptual idea of putting a gas station X place, that they can look at the code and say, yeah, it probably works there. And of course, we get the DRT and and all that to funnel through before it gets to us, but just, I guess, clear and objective. That's.
That sounds like if we were to move forward with anything, which that's not yet a clear decision, what we would want to do is still require a conditional use permit to be able to address any site-specific concerns while also establishing minimum development standards, which we could put buffers on even further to say, if adjacent to a residential zone, then you provide these additional standards beyond. But if you're not adjacent to a residential zone, you can be the smaller standard. We can do something like that where we're kind of doing belts and suspenders.
Yeah.
So it's more black and white.
More work for you, so we like it.
Job security.
Well, should we, should we discuss some of the criteria right now or?
Yeah, so I, you know, this is now off the top of my head, but it's recorded, so that means that I can think back to it. I I would say you would, if you're putting it next to a residential zone, much like we've already talked about, the standards that we we've discussed already, such as increased landscape standards, so instead of a five-foot landscape buffer on adjacent property lines, you would do a 10-foot landscape buffer. Instead of allowing for a choice of fencing, you would submit the the standard of it shall be a fully site obscuring fence. For lighting, you can put it specifically to say, all lighting shall be fully within the canopy structure and not hanging below it. And it shall also meet the standard lighting criteria that's already established in the code and set the 12,000 square foot minimum lot size standard. I think those as the minimum belt would would be an appropriate standard that if applied to any service station next to a residential zone would be very similar criteria that you would establish within a conditional use permit condition anyway. Adding the suspenders of then applying for the conditional use permit, which gives them the requirement to say, these standards that are applied are appropriate as they stand on their own to mitigate these concerns. Then they have to meet that criteria specifically within the the conditional use permit decision criteria as well. Does that sound fair?
Regarding one of the things you just talked about, about that landscape buffer zone. So for example, if you have a fence right on the property line and you have a 10-foot buffer zone from that fence, that, to me, that sounds excessive. Five foot sounds more reasonable. And the reason I'm thinking that is when I'm driving a big pickup in and out of this parking lot, sometimes these buffer zones kind of get in the way and you're jumping curves with your tires and stuff. So to create more room, turnaround room, more space in a parking lot, to set your buffer zones back a little bit.
If you reduce it down to five, then you're setting it at the standard which it currently exists today. Which, again, could be fine if the planning commission feels that a five-foot landscape buffer is appropriate. You can put in some high-density and high-screening landscaping with a site obscuring fence. And that high-density and and high-intensity landscaping could be further conditioned as part of the conditional use permit to reiterate that it has to be at that high level. And a five-foot could be acceptable. Providing the 10-foot provides you with enough opportunity to build in several layers of that barrier. And it just provides further separation from the direct adjacency of of a property line.
Well, what does everybody else think?
Well, I I understand what you're saying, but I do like, I like the idea of the 10-foot because of the the high-screening landscaping option, it just gives it more room to be a thicker vegetative, vegetative buffer, as well as a side obscuring fence, but I think as a neighbor, the more of that you can have, the more it'll feel more neighborhood-ish as opposed to industrial gas station.
So you're saying with a five-foot buffer, there would be small.
Yeah, you maybe get a hedge arborivitas in there, but if you have a, you know, if you have a 10, 10-foot landscape buffer, it gives the landscape architect some room to build and layer it. It's just going to look nicer. It's going to look nicer from the street. That's my, that's my two cents. You guys all have an opinion too, I think.
That makes sense. What do you think, Don?
I think I think I'd probably prefer to put that discussion later. This is more conceptual, more getting into the details.
So if we, if we move, if we decide to move forward tonight, it would be what we've already discussed as far as the location on arterials and collector streets. And then I, we've talked a lot about mixed use. Am I off-base by saying we should also allow this in industrial zone? Or you guys feel like that's right, wrong, indifferent?
No, I think it's appropriate. I guess reaching back to my other life, when I was driving truck, there was a lot of time fuel stations in an industrial zone that, because the trucks are already there. So it was convenient and handy. No, I think it's appropriate.
Like, I can picture a Pacific Pride fuel station in, you know, back there by Intex somewhere where.
I think it's more appropriate than mixed density.
Yeah, well, definitely. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so add industrial, please.
Got that.
And I can't even summarize what you already said, but you said it earlier about the minimum standards and the and the conditional use.
So, yeah, so for direction-wise, not to beat a dead horse, I think I would want the planning commission to as a group, make a decision of, do you want to move forward with consideration of an ordinance to put and expand opportunities for gas stations throughout the city in these two zones with buffers, with clear and concise decision. That answer needs to be had, I think, tonight before we spend more time on this. And if that's the answer, I will come back to the the planning commission with a draft ordinance, which would be subject to public review, public notice. And that ordinance would include the mixed use and industrial zones subject to a conditional use permit with a code amendment that would include expanded landscaping requirements, minimum lot size requirements, lighting standards and fencing standards for operation of gas stations when adjacent to residential zones.
Would it be appropriate to add hours of operation to residential zone areas or?
I, I would recommend that be left up to the conditional use permit process, which is already authorized under a conditional use permit application to establish minimum hours of operation within a development code. It could be heavy-handed.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so to move this along, I'm going to go one by one and ask you guys if you would like to move forward with opening up the opportunity for more locations for gas stations. Basically, what we've already described, just to get a feel from you all, and then we can get a motion depending on how that comes out. So I'll start with Don.
I think we talked last time, neighborhood commercial, it does not currently include gas stations.
No, it does not.
Does not?
It does not.
Do we want to include that?
Neighborhood commercial would fall under the same considerations of everybody's concern here, where it's going to be adjacent to residential. You have to understand that the mixed-use zone would also authorize it to be adjacent to residential uses. And so if there is a level of acceptance that that would occur, you could expand it to the neighborhood commercial zone, subject to these same standards.
But, yeah, my vote is to go forward.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Forward.
Based on your comments, forward.
Very hesitant forward, got?
Yeah, very hesitant.
Okay. Then in that case, is there someone who'd like to make a motion?
I mean, it is just a work session, so as long.
Oh, so you just need direction?
I just need direction. I don't need a motion, but as long as we know we're moving forward and those items that we discussed are the minimum of what you want to see, the next step is going to be a public forum where you will also get public input. Add more into it before it gets to a city council hearing.
So, okay, I was going to say, would it make sense for you to draft something and then we have one more work session and like iron out our little?
We can do that too, if you would like.
That'd be better, I think, before, before we just have a, you know, you put it in front of us, like, oh, I don't like this, this, that should be changed. That way we can hammer it out a little better.
We can draft it as ordinance language, but not subject to a public hearing, have you review the proposal, add to it, and then say, yes, go forth and do an ordinance, or no, we're not comfortable with it, scrap the whole thing.
That would be great.
Okay.
Now that we're moving forward with this, is the next step for us is to start discussing the criteria?
Once, I think, once she puts before us some paperwork, we can all have that in front of us. Before, before we actually meet, we can make our own notes, like, I like this criteria, this criteria should be in here, and then we can have a discussion on the whole thing and make a decision before it moves to the third step, if this is the first step.
We'll have a 10-step program.
Yeah. Hopefully, just six.
Do we want her to include neighborhood commercial?
I think that decision can be made when you see the buffers and the development criteria, if you think that there's going to be enough put in there. You can add a zone later if you want to.
Do we have really any?
No.
I know one time, this has been many years ago, the piece on the corner of Vaughn and South Main. But I don't know that we ever changed it. And that was the one I had in mind. I mean, it would work for what we're talking about.
Yeah, it says that to be subject to the neighborhood commercial zone, you are supposed to actually change the I think that practice has not been fully implemented over the years. And so there are instances in which there's commercial activity within the residential mixed-use zone, but it clearly applied the neighborhood commercial standard.
I guess they could, I mean, if it does, they do want to say, they could always request a zone change, just like they would
Yeah.
for residential, so forget it.
I can, we can throw it in there as a discussion item. I think zoning is the last conversation that needs to be had. I think there's been a lot of input and a lot of concern over impact to existing neighborhoods and especially regarding residential. Let's put together some, some standards that that and see if that assuages any of those concerns. If it does, great. If it doesn't, well, then either A, we punt it to the comp plan, or we just stop the conversation. But the whole thing is, as the resident representatives, you guys need to feel comfortable with the decision that's being made. And it does need to be a public forum, which it is right now, and will be available for any public comment in the future and choosing the zone after you figure out what those boundaries are. You can do that right up until ordinance time, so.
I don't want to make it more complicated, but we probably should have the discussion of the pros and cons of spot zoning too.
Add that as a training.
Well, good, you're up on it.
Right.
I think I've gotten the direction I need.
Oh, no, let's talk more.
You get to talk now.
Oh, he does.
Oh, yes. Now we're under the, well, commission business and comments, if I'm following the agenda tonight.
We will have a meeting next month that's going to include more of this stuff. We also have, I think, two applications. It might be three at this point. So it'll be another busy month. I'm gonna probably think, based off of how long the meeting's going for this discussion and having three applications, we'll probably skip a planning commission training next month and start again in October, unless you guys really are excited. training next month and start again in October, unless you guys really are excited about it after this discussion. And then we can do another one next month as well, but we wanna be cognizant of people's times, so.
And there's also, there are, you know, maybe one of the things, and maybe you've already done this, is, you know, just point them in the right direction on some of the online stuff that's available. There's a lot of really good information online in that handbook, and even I think some, I think some trainings that you can just do on the computer.
The Oregon City has resources to.
There's lots and lots of resources. You know, I kinda go there first when I'm looking at stuff too, because then somebody else has done the work.
Thought you had it all memorized.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That's part of the, yeah, that's part of what you do in law school is, you know, just ask me about a statute.
Yeah, yeah.
Jeff should know it.
Well, Kelly, I was gonna ask if this, the public or the planning commission training we're doing tonight, does that need to be part of the, like, public meeting we're having?
It is part of the, the public agenda, so we should still maintain it as a public meeting.
Okay.
Could, if you're all tired, say, sorry, Jeff, thanks for coming, but.
No, no, I, I want, I wanna do, I just wasn't sure if we had to have the cameras, keep the cameras on and all that. Okay.
Sorry.
And we'll move on.
I'm gonna say goodbye to Ron now.
I'd love to stay and hear Jeff, and maybe you can update me tomorrow.
I will. Send you a memo.
Yeah, please do.
See you later.
And I'll make sure that Jeff doesn't get too mad if I speed him up on a timer too, and we'll, we'll focus on the key stuff here and get us out of here.
Let's take like a five-minute break so we can get some water and use a bathroom.
So Chad, what do you do? You said you have a lot of meetings on Wednesdays.
Yeah, that too.
Yeah, I work for Target.
Oh, okay. Oh, are you? Okay.
Always have to agree or on a certain topic, but at least having just a civil and encouraging, honest and open communication between each other, it's going to be a big role in productivity. All right, so next slide. So as we mentioned, there's a couple of different types of decisions you guys are going to be making. There's legislative as well as quasi judicial decisions. Legislative decisions are going to be kind of focusing on large groups of people. The community as a whole is going to have a broad impact on people. Whereas quasi judicial decisions are going to involve the application of policies or regulations to a specific situation or piece of land. These decisions tend to impact smaller groups of people or maybe just individual persons.
And you'll note that, you know, the quasi judicial is where I have to give my exciting speech every time, but on legislative, we don't need to do that.
Yes. So the quasi judicial hearings are similar to judicial proceedings. There's going to be specific procedures. You'll hear testimony and also receive evidence. You're going to be applying existing law rather than actually making new laws. So the next slide. Okay, so Oregon ethics. Parties to a quasi judicial land use hearing are entitled to a tribunal which is impartial in the matter and having had no pre-hearing or ex parte contacts concerning the questions at issue. The goal with the land use is basically providing a fair and impartial hearing. It's going to be free of bias, any sort of conflicts of interest, ex parte contact, or even kind of the appearance of such things. We want people kind of coming in here believing that, you know, they're being heard and all the decisions that are being made are being made off of the facts in evidence and on the record, so it's not outside influence that's affecting the decision.
So if somebody stops us at Walmart and makes a comment, should we bring that up?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
You just have to state it. Guy stopped me, I had that ex parte contact, it's not going to influence my decision tonight.
And usually in those situations, just kind of explain to them that, you know, you're not really able to discuss the situation, but encourage them to show up to the meetings where their voice could be heard and of course, it's going to be all on the record as well.
I always say it's kind of like a judge. You guys have all seen a show where there's a judge and somebody tries to get some evidence in there and they object and says, okay, I'm going to exclude the evidence. Even though the judge knows what the evidence is, they ask to exclude it. So then, you know, he has to do it based on the evidence that's actually admitted into the record, not on what he may know outside the record. No different.
Perfect. So the next section we have regards bias. Next slide.
Come on.
Saying I need more jokes, is that what it is?
Yes.
Liven this up. So there's a couple of different types of bias. Obviously, personal bias is when a person has a specific interest in the outcome of the matter, so whether it be affecting their property or maybe, you know, their employer or a family member, or even the employer or property of a family member as well, could lead to personal bias. Prejudgment bias is going to be coming to the meeting already having made up your mind about the situation without even really reviewing the evidence or taking anything like that into account.
I had a case in Jefferson. I was actually representing a private party in Jefferson and there was a land use application. And, you know, they had had a couple of the people that were on the city council that had actually run on a platform in opposition to a certain annexation. And so the issue came up and we said, you know, you got, you prejudge this. I mean, we've got video of you out there rallying the troops against this, you know, against this annexation. And, you know, they did find that, you know, they had that, they had shown that prejudgment bias and couldn't be, couldn't act impartially based on that, so.
You know, that brings up a question. Can the commissioners be sued for a decision?
They can't be sued for a decision. Certainly, it can be appealed. They can challenge your, they can challenge, they can appeal it based on the fact that you didn't recuse yourself and you should have because you had bias. And I say this, I say this a little bit in that, you know, Joe Blow and anybody and their brother can go down there and file a suit against anybody. So, you know, I can't say that, you know, somebody wouldn't sue you. Now, then we get into the fact that your role here is your action within the, you know, for the government, like the city council or like any employees of the city. There's rules regarding indemnification by the city as long as you're acting within the scope of your, scope of your responsibilities as a planning commission member.
So the city attorney would defend you in a case like that?
That or somebody appointed by the insurance company for the city.
Is the type of bias you were talking about in the Jefferson case, does that exclude them from being able to make a decision or cast a vote?
Yep.
Okay.
So what it talks about?
There's some weird exceptions about where if there's too many, too many with bias and it takes you below a quorum or something, but that's really getting into the fine details.
When it talks about personal bias, how far does that go? As far as it says, have a personal interest in the outcome of a matter. So for instance, if we have an application for a grocery store and I'm excited about a grocery store in my neighborhood, is that considered personal bias?
No, I mean, it doesn't affect you personally other than, you know, I mean, you're excited about it, but we're kind of looking more of like a financial or some other sort of kind of outcome.
Kind of like that, you know, it affects you the same as it affects everybody else in the community and then it's not really a bias.
What about, for example, if you've got a property and that property has a required legal notification area where you're anticipating that those are going to have the interest of the impact associated with that decision? If a planning commissioner lives within that notification area, does that generalize, generally create a personal bias because you may?
We have a hypothetical that's going to address that exact question.
Well, then I'm jumping ahead and ignore me completely.
Because I know that comes up.
Yes. Next slide.
No, I'm gonna keep, no, you're good. So we kind of talked a little bit about partiality as well would be if a planning commissioner is actually working alongside the applicant with, you know, the application process. So might not necessarily be a direct impact, but it does still provide that, that appearance of bias. Of course, city's not expecting everybody to be completely free of bias, but like Trey stated earlier, when you're acting your role as a judge, you need to be able to kind of set aside that bias, take a look at the facts and make sure that you're applying the facts and the laws together to form your ultimate outcome. Engage in necessary fact finding and attempt to interpret, imply the law to those facts. Trey did want me to be very clear in that Oregon law is clear that where the person who is being asked to decide an application for a quasi judicial land use approval has taken a position either for or against that same application, recusal is almost always going to be required. All right.
One quick question, I guess it might fall into the prejudgment bias is, we've talked about, you know, people talking to other people and then forming a decision on it. What about commissioners talking amongst themselves about an application that should not happen, should happen, how many?
Are you saying talking as part of a public meeting or separately?
Prior to a public meeting.
So, no, don't do it.
That's ex parte contact.
Well, it's not ex parte contact, it's more it violates the public meeting laws because once the application is submitted and it's going to be before the planning commission, at that point, any deliberations towards a final decision have to be made in public. And it applies to, you know, it applies, you know, once the application is submitted, really. Because that issue kind of comes up once in a while when, you know, we learned of stuff or we talked about, you know, we talked about this two years ago about a grocery store going in right here. Well, that's, that's different because there wasn't a decision, you know, there wasn't a request for a decision pending.
All right, so you notice at the beginning of the public hearing, the chair is going to ask members of the public if they've had any ex parte contacts, any conflicts of interest or bias that would prevent them from making an impartial decision. If you have had either ex parte contact, personal bias, prejudice, anything like that that's going to render your, render you unable to make an objective decision, then at that point, you should declare that openly in the meeting, basically recuse yourself, so get up from your seat, go sit in the audience and not participate in the hearing process or any subsequent decisions.
The practical effect of that is, is the, on appeal, they've always, basically, it's not stating it, right? It's the not presenting the fact that you had the contact or it's not disclosing that you have a bias that's not going to affect your decision. And that's why, you know, we do what we do as far as if you state something and we follow up with those questions, stating that you can make, you know, you can make an impartial decision even though I had this ex parte contact. Because really, all of the, almost all of the reversals on appeal come from the non-disclosure. And then there's the cases of where, you know, there are cases where, well, I disclosed it, but it's pretty obvious that you, even though you disclosed it, that you still couldn't be impartial and that's where the other reversals come from.
Hypothetical, we haven't had happen yet, but I've seen is if someone did have conflict of interest and they excuse themselves, did they then give public testimony?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's my thoughts.
And the other part on these pages, we don't have to go through the stuff that I put in there. This was actually part of a brief I wrote in that, in the case over in Jefferson that just highlights some of the, some cases from Oregon that show, you know, where, where a person had to recuse himself and he wasn't able, shouldn't have made a decision.
I was going to ask that same question because that last bullet point says we can't participate.
Yes, I mean.
Probably as a commissioner as well, I guess.
Correct.
If the decision process.
Yes, yes.
If you make capacity as a commissioner.
All right, so the next slide. We're talking about here, ex parte contact. So ex parte contact, Latin phrase, meaning from one side only or with the other side absent or underrepresented. What we're going for in these meetings is create a level playing field. Obviously, ex parte contact can impact that playing field. So it's commonly understood as meeting, personal conversations, written communications or telephone conversations between a member of the hearing body and an interested party outside of the public meeting process. Ex parte contact also includes if you actually visit the property itself. It doesn't mean that you just simply drove by it, but if you, after you received the application, drove by, kind of wandered around, took, you know, decided to inspect the property, that's something that should at least be disclosed. All right, so ex parte contact does give the decision-making process the appearance, either real or imagined, of being one-sided, prejudiced, and therefore, kind of solely is the, the appearance of the planning commission itself, so makes it look like, like, you know, decisions are made outside of the public realm and you don't want any sort of like pay-to-play or anything like that appearance.
And the key is, like, let's say if somebody on their own just sends everybody, everybody on the planning commission an email, you know, why they should oppose this, right? Instead of just submitting it to the city. Well, if everybody says, you know, everybody kind of says, hey, I got this, this ex parte contact and make, make, put it in the record, disclose it and say it's not going to affect my decision, then the key is then, you know, if that's in the record, then the other side gets a chance to rebut it, right? Gets a chance to put their own evidence in.
So, question. Commenting, unless I'm getting hit on myself, about not just driving by the property, but actually going on to it, because in a small town where we all pretty much know every nook and cranny, how far does that go?
Again, ex parte cannot, it only affects it if there's a, if there's already been an application, right? So you have an application and you're going to have to make a decision on that application. And, you know, you're like, oh, where is this? I don't know where this is. So you, you drive down and you take a look and, and, you know, even walk the property or something just so you have a better understanding. Well, that's, that's, that's ex parte contact, right? And it doesn't mean you can't, you can't make a decision, but you have to disclose it. And the reality is, is that, because what they want is that for everybody to see and hear the same thing. So you've now seen something that the others haven't seen, right? You can actually, and it's never happened, I don't think, in a planning commission meeting, but I mean, you know, courts will do, you know, courts will send everybody out, hey, we're going to go, we're going to go look at this property. You know, they'll actually go out if it's that, if it's that relevant, right? It's so relevant that, you know, you really can't render a fair decision without seeing the property and walking the property and that kind of stuff. You can do that and that, that can be part of the public record. But the issue, and again, it's not the fact, you know, I would suggest that you not do it, but if you happen to do it, again, disclose it and put it on the record and make sure that, you know, the other side could rebut it if they needed to.
Is there really kind of an issue, you've got greater knowledge than the average person?
It's not as much as that, it's the, it's the, it's the ability of having it in the record and making sure that if you saw something while you were there or something like that, that the other side knows that and has the ability to rebut it or respond to it.
Okay.
And the next slide just kind of goes into a little bit about ex parte contact. I really just like the picture. But ex parte contact can prejudice the minds of the decision-makers, prevents full disclosure of information to all the interested parties on the record, does violate the public's right to know as well as prevents a complete record, can invalidate a decision, can destroy the public's confidence in the planning commission's decisions and should be disclosed or must be disclosed and any issues reported. So disclosure essentially is just going to be placing substance of the ex parte contact on the record. So, you know, what was the, the contact? Was it with a person or the property itself? And who was it with? Kind of the substance of what, what was discussed?
And as far back as I can, we never had a situation kind of like what I went through over in Jefferson, but I mean, in that case, not only did the, you know, did the commissioner, in that case it was counselors, the city counselors, disclose it and there's a right to cross-examine. I mean, the other side had an attorney too, everybody had attorneys, you know, there's attorneys all around the room. And, you know, you disclose it and then the city attorney asks some questions and then the other attorneys got to cross-examine that, you know, to try to build a record because everybody knew it was going up on appeal, so everybody wanted to have a record of everything. But, you know, that, you know, that's when we get into the quasi judicial, they're actually, it is actually judicial. I mean, there's a right to cross-examination and all that kind of stuff. Just haven't ever seen it here for a while and let's hope we don't.
All right, next slide. So this is some advice to the commissioners and counselors. So once a land use application is received by the city, do not discuss it with the applicants, with any neighbors, members of the public. I would even suggest not discussing it with other members of the commission, other commissioners outside of the public record. Again, we want kind of that full public record, make sure that everything's clear and present to the public. If a citizen does want to discuss an issue, explain that you cannot discuss the matter outside of a public meeting, but encourage the citizen to attend the hearing or submit written testimony to the city. And then finally, if you do have an ex parte contact, you must disclose it. After the declaration, you may be able to continue to participate in the public hearing process. Either the chair or the city attorney should ask specific questions on the record to show whether the ex parte contact disqualifies the commissioner from continuing. Ultimately, the record must show the commissioner can be impartial despite the ex parte contact. That is, if they are to continue to participate in the hearing. The city attorney and chair may conclude that the ex parte contact creates such a conflict or bias that they're not able to participate and would be asked to step down.
So is, would it not be considered ex parte contact if it had been previous to the city receiving a land use application?
Right, if there's no decision pending.
Yeah.
So if I, say I had a friend who's like, hey, I'm thinking about, you know, developing this property, putting mini-mart around here and I'm part of a planning commission, like, oh yeah, you should do that, you know, it'll go to the city and then maybe they'll come for a planning meeting. So then he goes through the process, is that considered ex parte contact?
No, but you may, it may be a personal bias if it's a friend, they just disclose.
Something you could disclose.
Yeah, you disclose and say, hey, this, you know, this is a friend of mine, I graduated high school, but it's not going to affect my decision. It's kind of like tonight, you know, we had the application by the gelots, everybody knows the gelots.
All right, conflicts of interest. So conflict of interest is any action or decision made by a public official that affects, of which would be a financial benefit or detriment to that person or that person's relatives, businesses, associations such as that. So for a conflict of interest, there does have to be a financial benefit and it would either have to affect that person, either their property, a direct family member, or if it affected their business as well, or again, if it affects a family member's property or business, would also create an actual conflict of interest. Public officials are prohibited from using or attempting to use their position for the financial benefit or gain of themselves or an immediate family member. Any questions on that?
And that's when a lot of people often misunderstand. I mean, they see anything as a, as a conflict of interest.
The main thing is financial benefit detriment. The general rule of thumb is for potential conflicts of interests where the public action could have a financial benefit or detriment to the public official, family member or their businesses, there the commissioner should announce that there is a potential conflict of interest. They may continue to participate in the decision and deliberation of the application. Typically, it'll again involve some questions from either the chair or the city attorney just to make sure that they are able to continue on. With actual conflict of interests, there are going to occur when there is definitely going to be a financial benefit or detriment to that public official or the, one of their family members or businesses, at which point the commissioner again should announce this on the public record and at that point, just kind of step away and abstain from participating either in, you know, the deliberation or voting. Again, they can vote or speak as a public, a member of the public, but not as a commissioner.
Okay, so here I've got to ask the question because we've always taken the position, or I've always taken the position in our land use decisions, especially if we're talking subdivision or wherever the case may be, that I didn't have to disclose it, but there is a potential financial benefit if I bring a buyer to that property.
I think, you know, you know, this is where there's such a gray area. And I know that, you know, you can say everything, you know, we put these rules out there and, you know, you could also, you could always find some hypothetical in which almost any decision you make could possibly create a benefit or a, you know, it doesn't go that far. I mean, it really, it's, you know, there, there has to be more of a direct nexus than that, other than, hey, we're bringing more business to town, that might help me, you know, as a lawyer, I give my business, right? So it's got to be, it's got to be farther.
Because that's, that I've always gone on, but that, it got my attention.
It would probably have to be a situation where this buyer would say, hey, you approve this and I'll buy these homes through your real estate agents.
Oh yeah, definitely.
That's probably an actual conflict.
That was just definitely.
What a good idea.
Some sort of bribe.
He may be out there talking as a part of the public on that one.
All right, and now we're fine.
But here I will say one thing. If you are concerned, I mean, the safest route is to always declare it, right? Especially if it's potential because then you could still, nobody could, nobody could attack it or repeal it because, because they say you have a potential conflict of interest and you didn't disclose it. So, you know, the safest route is if you're in your head saying, man, I don't know, just disclose it, avoid the perception.
All right, so we're going to move on to the hypotheticals. See how much you guys are paying attention and the fact that you guys actually have the answers on the next page probably doesn't help, but we'll see how this goes. So the first one, it would be that Mayor Aziz owns the property next to Ms. Meyer's. Ms. Meyer wants to develop their property and has made a development proposal that extends water and sewer 200 feet to serve the property and by extension could also be used by neighboring properties, including Mayor Aziz's. So in this situation, does Mayor Aziz have an actual or potential conflict of interest? Would he? Yes?
If you have a non-remonstrance clause.
Good question. All right, what should he do at this point?
Declare it.
All right, declare it. And then what else?
Excuse himself.
Excuse himself. So this one, since there is an actual pecuniary benefit to the mayor, it would be an actual conflict of interest, so he should declare it on the record and then at that point, basically, step away.
We actually had a different hypothetical in there and I made him change it because I didn't, I didn't actually agree. We pulled some of these from just some different various, I mean, we didn't make up all these, but we pulled them from some other presentations that we have available. And it was the, you know, the common one of, oh, okay, I own property and an apartment building's coming in and that apartment building has the potential for decreasing the, my property value. And I think that's a huge gray area, in my opinion. You know, there's so many different variables and I think something like that can only be decided on a case-by-case basis, you know, as you go through it. And I don't think it's a bright line rule, you know, just because, you know, a certain, certain type of a development is coming in and it's in your neighborhood or close to you or, you know, next door. I mean, I think that's, those are things that need to be decided on a case-by-case basis and there's no bright line rule.
This is some legalese here, what is pecuniary?
Monetary.
Okay.
Kind of like non-remontance or whatever, you know.
It's that fancy language we get paid extra for using.
Lawyers used to get paid by the word, that's why.
So yes, it does just kind of reiterate under ORS 244.020, public officials are prohibited from participating in decisions that will create either monetary benefit or detriment to the specific.
And you're always, you can always contact me ahead of time.
Yes.
You know, that, that doesn't have to be part of the public record if you want to talk to either of us about, hey, what should I do in this situation?
All right, hypothetical number two. So Lebanon does not include any criteria and procedures for dealing with annexation requests initiated by property owners. Staff has drafted a code, an amendment to include criteria to approve, deny an annexation. The legislation is pending before the planning commission. At the beginning of the public hearing, the chair states that she would like to declare an ex parte contact in the form of an email that she receives supporting the legislation. The chair notes that the email was sent to several other planning commissioners and requests other commissioners also declare this ex parte contact and any other ex parte contacts that the commissioners might have had. Is this necessary?
I don't think so.
Is the email public, public record?
The email at that point wouldn't have been included in the public record, but...
The email is a public record, but that's not.
But yeah.
But legally.
At the point, it should be if it becomes, yes.
But legally, you only have to declare what involves you, not what involves someone else.
The key to this one, and I'm jumping into Jeff's answer here, but the key to this one is that it's legislative, not quasi judicial.
So because the, yeah, this situation is going to affect the, the city as a whole, it doesn't affect anybody specifically or individual property, therefore, it's not necessarily a quasi judicial hearing?
It was a lawyer trick question, I apologize.
There it is. So yes, no declaration be required.
But because you asked, anything you receive regarding the business you do on the planning commission is a public record.
Yes, so yeah.
Text message.
Yep. Since the city is proposing to amend the city's development code and to add new policies and procedures, if adopted, the amendments will apply to a broad class of people, all future annexations to the city. The chair has the responsibility to do two things with the email. So the first is forward the email to the city recorder to make sure it's included on the record and also read the email during the meeting so all members of the planning commission have the same information. All right, hypothetical three. A property owner has requested a zone change. The planning commission has recommended the city council deny the zone change. Prior to the council's first hearing on the matter, Counselor Savage gave the city recorder a letter received from the property owner's neighbor opposing the zone change. Counselor Savage also requested the letter, Salvage, sorry. Randy, Randy Savage in my head. Counselor Salvage requested the letter be included in the record for this matter and when asked at the hearing, he declared having received the letter as an ex parte contact and stated the substance of the communication is available from the city recorder and is in the record. Is this sufficient?
I'd say yes.
All right. Overall, a great job, Counselor Salvage. Provided the letter to the city recorder to include on the record. The city recorder should include that record, that letter with the city council packet. He did also declare that there was ex parte contact at the public hearing, stated the substance and communication on the record as well. Added steps would be for the mayor or staff should ask the city councilor if the communication would affect his ability to make a fair and impartial decision on the application and this should also be stated on the record. And if he is unable to make a fair and impartial decision, at that point, he should step away.
So what should be clear is that the requirements here for you are exactly the same when it gets appealed up to the city council and they're acting as the review board.
Hypothetical four. Following the close of the record at the planning commission meeting, the commission had requests, had questions regarding some issues related to contamination and health risks at the site, including the meaning of a level two environmental report, which was arguably required under the city's zoning code. The commission directed the city planner to undertake some research. The planner contacted DEQ and forwarded a copy of draft findings for comment. Environmental... An environmental specialist responded by letter and provided the planner with a guidebook that included level-two report requirements. The planner subsequently forwarded the letter and guidebook items to the members of the commission for their review prior to the final adoption of the finding by the planning commission. And are the, so the question is, are these communications ex parte contact? Why or why not and what should be done?
Well, this seems to happen, like, quite often, doesn't it? When we get some kind of report made for the next hearing.
Well, I think the, the key's gonna be is, is the record still open?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Or is it, or is it reopened?
Following the close of the record.
Right.
Same.
Too much legalese for eight.
Yeah, we may let you read the last two hypotheticals by yourself.
So yes, in that situation, the, the record was closed, so it would be considered ex parte contact, stuff taking place outside of the record. We do have the little thing, bad job city planner, did raise questions, so received new evidence even though the, the record was closed, this could impact the decision of the councilors. So that's, that information should be and needs to be included on the record.
Well, and not only that, but I mean, the key there is the, you know, whoever's on the other side of that has to have a chance to rebut it, respond to it, et cetera, et cetera.
Exactly.
And there's, you know, in most cases, there's a way to reopen the record, we've done that before, allow time for response, reply, all that kind of stuff. And that's why we do that, is that, you know, it's not necessarily the fact that it's that big a deal, it's, it's, you know, they, everybody has to have a chance to see here and respond to the same evidence.
There wouldn't really be a situation where we close the record and then make a decision later on. Well, I, I mean, I guess we.
Sure, yeah, you make a decision and then instruct the, the staff to come back with the written report a month later and there's, at the next meeting.
There would be, that, I guess, a whole lot of point in that, would there? Like, if we're requesting that information, it's because we haven't made a decision.
Right, so an example of when this could occur, but would never occur with this group, would be like, we had the institution of the 777 rule to, to allow people to respond and rebut and all that kind of stuff. And after the record was officially closed, after the third seventh day period, there was a week and a half or two weeks before the planning commission resumed the, the conversation to make a final decision. It would be during that time when you all and the public have seen the record as a whole, where you would go, ah, it, it could be assumed that somebody could ask a question, well, what about this? And then my response would be, the record is closed, you either need to reopen it at the next meeting to extend it again to allow for further information, or we would get into that legal quagmire and we would not let that happen. But that would be a scenario in which something like that would occur or could potentially occur, but that's why you have the safeguards.
So sorry, Jeff, I'm gonna cut you off even though, you know, those last two are really exciting and, but go ahead and read them. I mean, I think the key, what I think you should take from this is, you know, a basic understanding. Recognize that we're here, ask us, if you're, if you feel a little queasy or uneasy or awkward, you know, it's probably something you need to put out there and you can call us ahead of time and talk to Kelly, Kelly, you know, Kelly's over there saying legalese and all that kind of stuff, she knows all this stuff better than we do, for the most part. And, and then the key is always just being open, you know, it's, it's almost always open unless you have the actual conflict of interest, which there's no exception to, and, and, and put it in on the record and make sure everybody knows the same thing. It's kind of, you know, it's, you're the judge and the jury and, you know, so it's kind of trying to find those same rules that we anticipate in partial trial, that everybody hears the same evidence and based, and makes their decision based on the evidence and not on something else.
Great. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
Thank you guys very much for taking the very first one. I think this was a great start to the training. No answer needs to be given to this question now, but if we are going to have a more lengthy discussion like this one as future trainings, it would be great to hear from you guys about whether or not you want to do an earlier start, like a five to six o'clock training session and then the meeting afterwards. Think about that, let me know. If we have that time flexibility, we can build that in instead of having the later night. And future trainees can also be shorter sessions depending on what the topic is. And if there's anything that you liked or didn't like, let us know and we can amend as appropriate, but I think this was a great start and I really appreciate you guys putting it together first.
Yeah, that's good stuff.
Thank you.
All right, is there anything else or are you guys ready to adjourn this?
Ready to have dinner. I want to talk about gas stations.
We will, we will. How have we got to use this in here in half?